Can you guys hear us online? Okay. Thank you.
Hi Glenn.
Hi Allison.
Hi.
Hey there.
Who do we have in the room?
We have Nate and Rebecca with us at the moment.
Okay, awesome.
Yep, and we have Nancy as well, and then we also have Kristen and I'm sorry, and Danielle from the City Clerks for the training.
Awesome, thank you. Crystal Carr sent me a message. She wasn't sure if she would make it. Did you hear from Amy?
It looks like Amy's online right now.
Oh, cool. Hi Amy. Good, so we probably have everyone that's going to attend. Aleah's out of town, Michael Quintana's out of town, and then like I said, Crystal Carr mentioned that she likely wouldn't be on, and if she is, she would be late, so. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order promptly at 5:30. I'm glad to be back. I know it's, I'm on the screen here, but happy to be back and thanks to everyone for your patience and all the work that you've done while I was away. I appreciate you all, so thank you for staying on task. Let's see here, so as I'm, you know, getting re-familiarized here, I gotta switch some screens. Okay, so our agenda tonight, we have. Let's see, sorry. We have quite a few, we have eight. We have, well, first of all, I don't think there's any public comment. I don't see any people sitting back there on non-agenda items, but. So we'll move on to approval of minutes. So I have these eight minutes, and I noticed that the first two, we probably can't vote on because I think I'm the only one that was there for those two that are present on this call. When I looked, like in 2022, that would just be me and Aleah, and I think 2023, Crystal and Michael and me and Aleah, but am I correct? I don't think we can vote on those because it was only me. I'm only, I'm the lone person that was in those meetings, correct?
Hi Allison, this is Kristen, Deputy City Clerk, Kristen Ducoy. So under Robert's rules, you can vote on meetings for a minute, meeting minutes for a meeting that you weren't present for. We do need to get some sort of record for those meetings approved. Essentially, I was gonna go over this too a bit later. The approval of the minutes is a collective judgment by the board, not an individual recollection, so you're just confirming accuracy of those minutes. So if there are a lot of board members that weren't present for that meeting, then I would encourage us to try to follow what Robert's rules allows you to do in that case. However, there are some cases where board members might be uncomfortable approving minutes for a meeting that they weren't present for. We understand that. Sometimes they might want to abstain, but we do need to find a way to get some sort of record approved.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to, to look at them? And are board members comfortable voting on approval of minutes if you weren't there?
I'm sure, no problem.
You're good, okay. All right, so I will just go down, down the list unless you want me to share them on the screen.
Allison, can I? Sorry, I just have a suggestion that you might actually, depending on if the board expects there'll be discussion about the minutes, it might be appropriate to treat them as a consent calendar and just pull any that need discussion. Are you familiar with the process for a consent calendar by chance?
Nope.
Okay, I'm hoping this could be an effective tool for you to use in this case. So the way that a consent calendar works, and we can apply it to, to the approval of minutes section here, is that as a chair, you can read through all of the minutes that are on there, and then you'll ask if anybody wants to pull any minutes for discussion. And then from there, the minutes get approved either as a total package as presented, or all of the minutes get approved as amended with the minutes that were pulled for discussion immediately after. Does that make, would that be helpful?
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Okay, cool.
All right, so, sounds like I will read all of the minutes that are on this approval list, starting with number one, September 21, 2022, August 16, 2023, February 21, 2024, April 17, 2024, June 19, 2024, September 18, 2024, October 16, 2024, and December 18, 2024. Would anyone like any of these minutes polled for discussion and review? Hearing none, I will move to take a vote on these minutes, approve all of these minutes by, since we've got people on screen, and I think I need like some voices and some raising of hands, so all board members who approve all eight minutes as they are presented, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any nays?
Real quick Allison, so we consider you as the mover, and then somebody needs to second that as well.
Oh, got it.
I'll second that.
I'll move to approve, and Glenn second. All right, everyone approves now?
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Glad you're here.
Happy to be here.
To help us with the, the next agenda item is the presentation from the City Clerk, Training on Effective Meetings, so I appreciate you being here, and you have the floor.
Great, thank you Chair Gerbig. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen just a moment here. You can go ahead and pass those out, yeah. This is again Kristen Ducoy, your Deputy City Clerk, and I also have our Court Clerk, Danielle Owens, here. She is assisting me with some things here in person. We are passing out the motion cheat sheet that is in your board packet for, for reference, a little bit further into the presentation, but I'll also screen share it when we look at, look at that as well. Let me see here, from. Beginning. Okay, can everybody see, okay? All right, I see thumbs up, thank you. Great, so we have developed this effective meetings training for all boards and commissions. We have designed it to hopefully be a little bit engaging and fun for you. I will be looking for some motions throughout for practice and asking you questions and inviting you to participate. So with that said, feel free to give me thumbs up, raise your hands, or interject as you feel necessary. Let's see here, my first question for you on effective meetings is, what do you think makes an effective meeting? And there's more than one answer to this, anybody who wants to contribute.
Well-defined agenda.
All right, thank you Nate. Anybody else have any other thoughts on what makes your meetings effective?
Being prepared and open to discussion.
For sure, yeah.
I'll just chime in with a quorum and attendance.
All right, yes. All right, and then why do you think it's important that your meetings are effective? What is that support?
Well, I think that typically would, boards and committees would basically all volunteers, and we want to use our time productively, so an effective meeting means that it's worthwhile, otherwise it becomes a waste of time, and why are you doing this?
Absolutely. Anyone else have anything to add? Okay, great, all really good points. So we'll go ahead and jump into the next slide here. I have a presentation agenda that we're going to be following through the slides here, and I hope with your permission, I am going to be chairing the presentation. So I will start by saying it's November 19 at 5:40 PM, and I'm calling this presentation to order. With that, we'll move on to Section B, Roll Call. We, let's see here, roll call of course is essential for the record and establishing quorum. We do recommend a bit of formality with this. It is proper to state all names and call everyone out like you would in school, and then be sure to announce any absent members. With that said, we do recommend that your board acknowledge, or probably the chair acknowledge who's excused or not excused from absent, for absent members, and something for you to consider putting into your official SOP when you work on that. This is important because unexcused absences can be grounds for removal by the city council. With that said, clear roll call also helps support your minute takers, as they are not always present for meetings, and it can be difficult to make out in some cases if video's off, or you can't tell from the video here in Memorial Hall who is present on the recording, or if you can't remember. So, and then we also recommend that as best as you can, try to designate one individual to do roll call. This might be the chair, secretary, or staff, and just keeping that as the same person more often is gonna help support consistency for you all. All right, so I'm gonna go on to Section C, Approval of Agenda. This is a section that we recommend all our boards and commissions have on their regular meeting agendas, and it does provide the opportunity for the board to approve the agenda as amended or as presented, and in doing so, they're agreeing to follow the agenda from top to bottom, or in the approved amended order. It's approved by a motion, second, and majority vote, and then when amending, they may decide to remove items or reorder items. However, we do recommend that you do not add items to your agenda, especially if the board is intending to vote on an item, because you want to stay in compliance with open meeting laws notice requirements. With that said, I do have a suggested amendment to our presentation agenda, but before I make that suggestion, I would like to ask if, I would like to suggest that we make a motion that all motions and votes during this presentation are not valid and are for training purposes only. And for the purposes of this exercise, I'm gonna have our court clerk participate as a board member as well, and our alternate's gonna participate as well. So, I am inviting you all to do some role play here. Does anybody want to attempt to make a motion to make the motions during this training invalid?
I will make a motion to make the motions during this training invalid.
Thank you Rebecca, and does anybody want to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you Allison. All right, and with that said, does anybody have any further discussion or questions about this? No, okay, all right, and then I'm gonna do something called a roll call vote. Has anybody done that before?
Sure.
Yeah, we've got one. So I'm gonna call out each of your names, and then if you want to say aye or nay, and, and just go ahead and vote appropriately. All right, so we'll start with Board Members Allen. If it, how do you vote?
Do I just say presenter here?
It's, it's a vote, so it's gonna be a aye or nay. It's, it's two.
Aye, yes.
Aye, yes, thank you, or yes. All right, and Bosley Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mock?
Aye.
Nassif?
Aye.
Owens?
Aye.
And Chair Gerbig?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for that, helping keep my slides in order here. All right, so we are bringing our, I forgot that. Excuse me, I skipped ahead there. I am suggesting that we reorder our agenda. Would anybody like to practice and make a motion to move E1 motion commotion before meeting structure?
I'll move that E1 motion commotion be moved to be head of D meeting structure.
Before D, okay. And does anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question, you want me to, what, what is the intermediary step when you, someone says so moved?
We're actually gonna go over that a bit later, so.
Well then, yeah, don't let me steal any thunder from you.
Oh, you're good. It's a great question though.
Piece of candy.
For sure. All right, actually Danielle, you could probably hand out some candy right now. For those who are participating in person, we do have candy. For those of you that are online, feel free to stop by the clerk's office if it's convenient for you. We, I'm sure we'll have candy in the near future here still leftover. All right. Okay, so we, we have a motion and a second to amend our agenda. I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote again here. Board Members Allen?
Aye.
Bosley Mitchell?
Aye.
Mock?
Aye, sorry, I can't get to the button fast enough.
No worries, thank you. Nassif?
Aye.
Owens?
Aye.
And Chair Gerbig?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Sorry, got ahead of myself. This is my sixth time doing this presentation. So, as you can tell, we've already started playing the game, motion commotion, bringing the meeting to life here with some role play and some practice. And this is all for the benefit of getting comfortable with motions, discussion, and voting, hopefully with some fun thrown in. And the general process is gonna be that I will open a item for discussion, then a member will make a motion, and then there'll be a second, and more opportunity for discussion before voting. And finally, the role of clerk announces the outcome, which often might be something that your chair does, or can be, voting and outcome announcements can be delegated to secretary or staff if that's helpful. And I will note that Robert's rules, which is referenced in our city code, is a little bit more formal than this process, but for tonight's purposes, we're gonna be practicing this general step through, one through five process. And then, can I get a thumbs up if anybody was able to take a look at that motions cheat sheet that was included in your packet? Yeah, all right, couple of ya. So I, I'm gonna go ahead and pull it up here for us to look at. I, we did create this motions cheat sheet as a reference point because it is, these are all motions from Robert's rules that are directly referenced in our city code. More often, you're, you're probably not gonna use all of these motions. There are some that you probably would use more than others, such as maybe adjournment, if, if that's how you adjourn your meetings. And then there is main motion on the back, which is the, it's, it's gonna be like, I moved to recommend to council, I moved to approve, and matters like that. You might occasionally use a postpone amendment, there are a few on here, and maybe you use amend possibly if you need to do that more formally. There is also something called friendly amendment, which I can explain if anybody wants to hear about that, but I wanted you to have the, this sheet as reference since it's in our code. And yeah, if anybody has, does anybody have any questions about this? No?
Do you, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, like, so do, when I'm ending a meeting, like, if that's, it's required that I ask for, like, a motion to end the meeting, or?
No, I wouldn't say so.
I'm just, I wanna be clear, like, I know we're different than, you know, city council or planning, because we're an advisory board, so I just want to make sure that we're like formal, but also like, where's there room for wiggle?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So adjournment, we, we just advise that however you adjourn, you adjourn consistently. So that would be essentially adjournment by chair that you're talking about. So you might ask if there are no objections or nothing further, then we'll adjourn, and then you'll pause, and if nobody says anything, we'd say that's absolutely appropriate for adjourning. Like I said, our only recommendation is to do it consistently. So if you're not motion and voting regularly, then you probably just keep it that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. All right, and then we've been practicing the roll call vote a bit already. Does your board usually vote verbally, visually, or both?
I don't know, like what we would usually do.
Okay, yeah.
What do people say? I mean, I think it's kind of like what I was doing today, asking for both.
Yeah, I think I see you today using both verbal and visual cues. I would recommend considering, if, our, our recommendation of the clerk's office is for those online at least, to try to do something like a roll call vote, so that way it makes more clear because.
Got it.
On calls, sometimes things cut out, or if videos are off, it just helps make things more clear. If your roll call at the beginning of the meeting is really clear and good, then we would say a hybrid approach for those in person. Maybe do that verbal visual vote, and then call everyone who's online. Does that sound good? Cool, that's just our recommendation. All right, and I'm gonna go ahead and go to Item D1, Roles and Responsibilities. We'll go over these. So of course you have your chair, who runs your meetings and may oversee assigned tasks as needed. Of course, a big part of running those meetings is working with staff to create the agenda. Your vice chair will fill in for the chair whenever they're absent. Your secretary is responsible for minutes. Regular members are expected to attend all meetings unless excused, participate in discussion, and vote on motions. Alternate members are not required to attend meetings, but may participate in non-quasi-judicial discussions. Alternates may only vote when filling in for absent regular members and promoted through the appropriate process. So on that note, regarding appropriate process, our city code does reference that the process for promoting an alternate be included in the board's official SOP. So I know that's something that we are working on in the near future here. In the meantime, you might consider, I think if the chair just announces if a alternate is seated, if you want to go more formal than that, you could do a motion second and vote to promote them to a voting member for either an item or the whole meeting, but it is helpful for the record to have that announced, so that it is recorded in the minutes.
Is that just a, a one-meeting thing? I mean, it's not like you're, you have to be promoted for the rest of the, the year. You just do it for one meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, if you do that, it should be clarified if it's for the whole meeting or for an item. You can't really promote an alternate indefinitely. That would be more like if they wanted to change their status, their membership with the city council. The city council would do that appointment. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Any other questions right now? Cool. All right, and you have your staff liaisons who assist you with remote technologies, provide reports as noticed on the agenda and answer questions regarding rules of order. Um, council liaisons provide procedural direction to the board and relay the city council's position to the board. And they are not required to attend meetings. All right, any questions about these ones?
Can I just clarify on the alternate member? So
Yeah.
Like with Glenn here. Cause Glenn, are you an alternate or are you?
No, I'm, I'm a regular member.
Oh, good, okay. So whoever my, like Nate's an alternate, so, and Leah or whatever is not here, am I supposed to say, like verbally in the beginning, like promote him to like?
Yeah, yeah, for right now, until you have that in your written procedure, I would, um, announce that he's alternate. Um, I believe there is a section of code that, um, pretty much authorizes the chair to do that. Um, but it is something that's also required to be in your SOP. So the whole board will have to address that together when working on that SOP.
Got it.
Okay, cool. All right, and then under the item D1 roles and responsibilities, I have a motion commotion for you all, and this one's a bit silly. But, um, I'd like to ask you for practice, should the board adopt a mascot? Does anyone have any comments, any ideas, any names for the mascot?
Are you asking for a discussion around that or?
Yes, I'm opening this up for discussion.
Concerned that it may create reputational risk for the board.
Okay, good point. Thank you.
I would think being a, um, housing board, we ought to have a, you know, a house dog or a house cat as our mascot.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I believe it's unnecessary.
I do as well, because I just can't think of what would be the affordable housing mascot besides a house. Like I don't.
Well, that could be a suggestion as well, I suppose, a house. Um, this is again, open for discussion, open for anybody who wants to practice making a motion. Um, you have all those motion cheat sheet items that you could go off of as well, if you want to try any of those out. And then I also want to welcome our liaisons to participate in discussion in the, um, capacity of your roles if, as you see fit to.
Well, I'll make a motion to hold off on adopting a mascot for HAB.
All right, thank you. And then I heard Amy second the motion. Is that correct? Yes, I got thumbs up from her. Okay, so I, I'll take that hold off as motion to postpone. And would it be indefinite? Nate says yes, for the record. All right, uh, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay, um, so I'm going to go ahead and have us practice the roll call vote again. But before I do, do I have any volunteers that want to try to practice announcing the outcome of the vote? Um, so this might be motion carries unanimously or motion carries, let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, six voting members that, um, right now. So it might be motion carries five to one with, um, someone opposed. Um, just doing that announcement after I call the vote. Does anybody want to practice that?
I'll practice.
Allison will go to go. Okay. All right, so I'll start with board member Alan. How do you vote?
Aye.
Bosley Mitchell?
No.
All right, Nassif?
No.
Mac?
Nay.
All right. Owens?
Nay.
And Chair Gerbig?
Yay.
Yay. They made that challenging for you.
I know, so I think it's, uh, like the, the motion was to postpone it and I had like four, I had four people, four board members who said no, and only two said yes, so motion denied.
Yep, motion failed.
Motion failed. Four to two.
Then it would be two to four.
Oh, two to four.
And then, um, in that case, I would say with board member Alan and Chair Gerbig in favor. Does that make?
So I would say all of that, I would say bor-, um, motion fails two to four. Um, with Chair Gerbig and Secretary Allen in favor.
Yep. That helps make it for the record. Hopefully they're not always that complex. All right, well, thank you for doing that. Um, okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on to item D1 or D2. Understanding quorum and voting requirements. Does anybody remember the definition of a quorum from our previous training or want to try to define that?
Uh, one more than a half.
That's correct, yes. There's a little more to it as well, if anybody has any, any suggestions or ideas. So, um, board member Bosley Mitchell is correct that it is more, more than a half. Um, it's majority of the board equates to a quorum and a quorum is also the minimum number of members that must be present at a board meeting to make the proceedings of that meeting valid. Um, so as you probably know, at the last meeting, we didn't have a quorum. So Roberts Rule says that you then have to call the meeting to order, announce that there, um, is not a quorum and then immediately adjourn the meeting. All right, and then I have, um, some questions for you. We're going to do some math here. If you have seven appointed board members, how many is your quorum? I heard Nate say four. It's four. And then you, you can put up fingers if you want or speak out, whatever's comfortable.
Sometimes quorum is not, um, there might be a lower number for quorum than just majority, is that correct?
Uh, it, it's, it's defined as a majority in our, in our code, majority of appointed members.
I see, okay.
Yeah. What about if you have five appointed members?
Three?
Three, I'm seeing threes, yes. And if you have three appointed members?
Two?
I hear and see two, thank you. All right, and then on the matter of voting, and we just went over that motions cheat sheet. So this is in reference to that as well. Um, per our city code, the motions are defined to require either a majority or in some cases, there's a couple on there that are two thirds vote of those who are present. So if you only have, let's say, five board members present, even though you have seven appointed to your board, but you have five present for the meeting, how many do you need for a motion to pass by majority?
Three.
That's correct. And what if you have six members present?
Maybe eight, four.
That's correct, yep. Does anybody have any questions about that? Nope, okay. Great. So, item D3, we have code requirements. Uh, our municipal code is on the city's website. Has anybody been able to look at that before? Give it a thumbs up for that? All right, a lot of you, awesome. I'm going to highlight a few sections of code that are relevant to all boards and commissions. Uh, we have, all boards and commissions shall consist of seven voting members and up to three alternate members. During the first board meeting of each year, the board shall elect a chair, vice chair and secretary. Additionally, I will say that does have a requirement to be reported to the clerk's office. Per Manitou Springs Municipal Code, each board and commission shall provide the opportunity for public comment. It's not more specific than that in our codes, or a recommendation is to follow suit with city council and just have that on every regular meeting agenda. And then each board shall establish and maintain its own written op, stand, written standard operating procedures. Does anybody have any questions so far? No, okay. I'm going to go ahead and go to the website just in case anybody wants to see the navigation. And I can do a quick breakdown. So on the city website, we have the government tab and then you go to municipal code. And here it's going to take you to code of ordinances where it has first ordinances that are not yet codified in this menu over on the left. And then in here you have your charter, which can only be changed by election. And everything underneath that are from ordinances, uh, that went through city council. So, uh, I'll take a look at that SOP one that we referenced before. It's under 209. And it was O80B. So this section right here. Uh, I will point out that the specific minimum requirements say that it shall include information on open meetings requirements, a process for selecting which alternate will vote in the absence of a regular member and more than one alternate is present, and training for members. Um, clerk's office did send out a template to all staff liaisons, um, with, it's got, um, open meetings, information in it and some other things for consideration related to this and other processes. Uh, we would say that well-developed procedures can greatly support effective meetings for our boards and commissions. And we are requesting that our boards formally adopt by the end of the year, if you can, and file with the city clerk's office a SOP. We do recommend reviewing this at least annually. Um, and that is all I have on that. Um, I'll also show that have, every board and commission on here has their own section of code as well. If you have, I don't know if you've seen this part before, but powers and duties, just for mention, are in there for HAB. All right, any questions about the code? Okay. We'll go back to our slides. All right, item E2, turning discussion into action. I will start by saying that a board only acts through formal collective decisions. Individual board members can't speak or act for the board unless the board has formally voted on something. Um, why does voting matter? It is because motions are how the board moves from discussion to action. A motion documents the board's official position or decision. It helps staff, council and public understand what the board officially decided. And without a motion, there's questionably no clarity on whether the board supported, rejected, or even considered in action. Um, also with that, we do currently use summary style minutes, but the one thing for sure that always gets captured in that public record is a motion. So, um, when it comes to when to make a motion, I do have that generally summarized at the top of this slide. But I'll say that if anytime you're making a recommendation to the council, um, we are suggesting to our boards and commissions that they consider start putting member appointments and reappointments on the agenda for a vote. It's a more affirmative way to, um, make that recommendation as a whole board of those appointments um, and any other official recommendation to council. Anytime you authorize an action or initiative on behalf of the board, um, that could be adopting a, or amending an SOP, for example, uh, anything that goes beyond discussion or fact finding. Uh, if you wanted to support or, or oppose a position officially, and then if you're approving the use of funds or resources. And then when making a motion, I like to think about to, to have it complete, actionable and without ambiguity. I like to think about who, what, when, where and why. Uh, this is not necessarily applicable to every question that you're posing when you're considering a motion for something, but it's a good way to make sure you've checked all the boxes. And then of course, there are times where a motion is not needed, such as to gather more information. Um, or if you need to take a short break, requesting a future agenda item that can be handled between staff and chair. It doesn't need to be a motion. Um, of course, there are times where there can be too many motions and it reduces productivity um, or makes an ineffective meeting in some cases. But as a rule of thumb, we recommend using motions to clarify, decide and act. Does anybody have any questions about this guidance? No? Okay. Well, under the subject of turning discussion into action, I do have a motion commotion. We're going to uh, test our instincts with some scenarios. I'm going to pose some questions to you. I want you to think, do we really need a vote for this? And more importantly, why or why not? And then if appropriate, we can walk through the process of the motion commotion. So for visuals, I'm going to put it up on the screen. Should the board compile and publish a cookbook titled Quorum Cuisine featuring members' favorite meeting snacks? Does anybody have any discussion comments? And does this need a vote?
I have a comment. Um, I would like to not open this up for discussion because it does not fall under her roles and responsibilities as a board.
All right, thank you Rebecca. So saying it's irrelevant to your board. Okay, yes.
I concur.
All right, so we've got another one, concur. Yep.
I guess I would think that's pretty casual, so it wouldn't require any kind of a motion and like it's probably not relevant to the board.
Okay, yeah.
Do you make a motion to postpone to an indefinite time discussion?
You, you could make a motion to postpone. I did make these examples a little bit silly and out there. Um, my intent was to make this the, the example of a motion, but your, your points are very valid. Um, it's because the board would compile and publish something, um, that it would be considered for a motion. Um, of course, you aren't required to motion on anything, but, um, it, uh, just the, the context of looking beyond the silliness and looking at compiling and publishing something on behalf of the whole board is the example here.
So it'd be like, I make a motion to postpone this to the December HAB meeting.
You can, you can do indefinitely, you could do a definite date, whatever you want a motion. Did you want to do?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead Rebecca, no, sorry.
I'm going to want to make a motion to postpone this discussion to an indefinite time.
All right, Rebecca made a motion to postpone indefinitely. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And, uh, any further discussion? Nope, okay. All right, and then I will go ahead and do a roll call vote. And, uh, does anybody want to try to clerk this one? Announce the outcome. No, Danielle?
I'll do it.
Thank you. All right. So, uh, board members, Alan, how? So, board members, Alan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bosley Mitchell?
Aye.
Mock?
Aye.
Nassif?
Aye.
Owens?
Aye.
And Chair Gerbig?
No.
All right.
Motion passes five to one with Chair Allison opposed.
Thank you. Great job, everyone. All right. And I have another scenario for you. Again, does this require a vote? Should the board research whether public comment is more respectful when jazz music is playing in the background?
I say this would not require a vote.
Does anybody want to guess why?
Because we're just researching. We're not deciding or acting on anything.
Yes, exactly. Well, this is my example for something that doesn't need a vote. All right. Any questions before I go over the next item? Okay. Great. So we have E3, do's and don'ts. So on the matter of clear discussion, we do recommend that you be efficient and concise in your communications to support transparency and avoid skipping important context. Not something to stress a lot, but it is helpful when you're speaking during a meeting to consider providing the full context so that if anybody was to sit in on one meeting from beginning to end, that they could generally follow what's being discussed, even if you have to reference previous discussions. Just a way of communication to consider. And then we have so moved. So moved is a common way of saying you agree with and support a specific proposal or motion. And you often see, you might see that used as a motion. Does HAB use that motion very often?
Not that I know of. Do you guys use it? Have you used it?
Maybe occasionally. No. Okay. All right. So it typically what you might hear is the chair something like approving minutes. They might call for, does any, do I have a motion to approve these minutes? And then you might hear a board member say so moved. In that case, it's pretty clear what the motion is. So we do recommend keeping this as an effective tool for non-complex matters like agenda, approving the agenda or approving the minutes. And then if you do hear somebody use so moved as a motion and you're not clear on what the motion is, we do recommend calling for a point of clarification or a point of information is the official Roberts Rules term. That is a question that's asked to help better understand the topic being discussed. It's directed to the chair. No votes required, and the chair decides if it's answered right away or later. So it's something that could be used for more than just a so moved motion, but just something that we wanted to share with you all. And then
So Kristin, in that example, if someone so moved something, are you still expecting someone to second it? Or is there the second sort of implicitly inside of the so moved?
We would still need a second. So the so moved would be the motion. And so you have one person doing the motion and then you have another person who seconds. So you would still need that. Did, did that answer your question? Okay. For like how that, how the steps in the process go? Okay. Cool.
So you're, just to clarify, so you're saying, so if I said, do I have a motion to approve all of those minutes and someone just says so moved instead of saying, I move to approve the minutes? Is that what you're saying? It's just a quick way to say that?
Yes, that's, that's exactly it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they still need a second? And we still need votes or whatever?
That's correct.
Okay.
You got it.
I have a question. I know in some boards, the chair is not allowed to make motions. Is that not the case though in a, in a board like this?
That is not the case for, for our boards and commissions or for our city council. I can't remember the exact terminology for those, but, but our chairs and our mayor do vote and motion.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. So again, just don't use so moved for anything complex. Just keep it for those routine items and when it's very clear. And for approving minutes, we do recommend ensuring that minutes are clear and detailed enough to be understood by anyone. We recommend that everyone review minutes carefully before approving, even if you weren't present at the meeting. If you come across clerical errors like typos, misspellings, or obviously incorrect dates, you can report that directly to the secretary for correction. It's not something that needs to be brought up at the meeting or motioned on. However, if you have corrections related to context, tone, or substantive content, then you want to save that to be brought up during the meeting and potentially approved as amended. And then again, just to reiterate, attendance is not required at the meeting to approve the minutes for that meeting. So just to kind of go over that a little bit again further. Roberts Rules does not require you to be present. So if you had been absent at last month's meeting and the minutes are presented to you at this meeting, you are allowed to participate in that approval process because it's a confirmation by the body that the written record accurately reflects what occurred, like a collective judgment, not an individual firsthand recollection. Does that make sense for everyone? Okay. And I will say if you weren't present at the meeting and you're reading the minutes, you could be a good person to read the minutes to ensure that they make sense because the minutes should be able to stand on their own to, as a record.
Ken, I know on council, technically, we're not ever supposed to recuse ourselves for any, or not recuse ourselves to abstain. Is that true for boards and commissions as well?
That's a good question. Um, a lot of things that apply to council, we might consider in a sense to trickle down to our boards and commissions. So even, I think what you're referencing to might be in code if, if I
Yeah, I can't remember.
Okay.
But I know because it sounds, you know, council doesn't follow this rule all the time, like last night on the minutes. And even though our lawyer has advised us that it's perfectly okay to vote on minutes, even if we weren't present. That's the only time that abstentions have been allowed on council motions. So yeah, I just wanted to ask that question if it's also applies to boards and commissions.
Yeah, I will. I'll do a little bit of research and follow up on that one. But I have a feeling that it would apply to our boards.
Yeah. And I, and I just, it's like you're, you're put on a board and commission to make decisions and to act. And if you just, I consider abstentions like a coward's way out. If, if a topic gets difficult, then you don't want to be on the record. That's not appropriate after you've been appointed to a board or commission. So that would be my interpretation of that.
Yeah. To, to your point, I think, I do think I came across something similar to that and I will confirm because I do a follow-up email to the boards and commissions after this training. Just, just to kind of recap some things. But I, I remember on my roles and responsibility slide, I did say that regular members are required to vote. So I believe that that is, I think I got that from, from somewhere.
You can't abstain, but you definitely can recuse yourself if there's a conflict of interest. So
Yes. Yep. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and go to Toolkit for Success under item E4. We have two sections here. These are more for your chair and staff in creating the agenda, but I wanted you to be aware of what they are. So Consent Calendar is something that we practiced for the Approval of Minutes section today. It is a bundle of items that is voted on without discussion as a package. It allows the board to differentiate between routine matters, matters that don't need discussion and more complex issues on the agenda. So like you saw, your chair reads out all the items that are on the consent calendar. And then from there, they'll ask if anybody wants to pull anything for discussion. And the consent calendar gets voted on. The whole, either as amended with items pulled or just as presented if nothing was pulled. So, so that's an effective tool for you all to use should it come up again. And then we do recommend that all our boards and commissions have board correspondence on their agendas. This is a section that lets members raise any issues or ideas for future meetings. It also reflects city council's agenda where they have city council correspondence. It's not for anything lengthy. It's just quick mentions only. And that is that for those. Does anybody have any question about these agenda sections and how they work? No? Okay. And then we do have the Civic Clerk Board Portal, which we have signed you all up for. So I'm going to go ahead and do a quick demonstration of what that looks like. Just going to filter this. When you log in, it should just be HAB in here, which is a little bit easier to look at. This is a meeting management tool that you could use to view published agendas, minutes, and notes. Notes, notes that you've put in here. Packets, of course, are in here as well. And there are some features that allow you to annotate or, or take notes, like I said. So we'll go ahead and click into today's agenda, for example. There's View File and Annotate File. I'm not going to go over this because it's not my top recommended option. And I'll send out a video after the meeting of, from the Civic Plus portal. They have a video on one of their official websites that kind of shows how that feature works. But the reason I don't love this feature is because if you annotate in the packet and then you go and annotate on a specific agenda item, for example, if we click on these minutes and if you wanted to annotate here, it does not translate over. So this agenda item attachment is included in the packet, but your annotations are not going to translate to both. However, we did provide a cheat sheet in your packet for the Board Portal Notes feature, which you would simply type in here. Whatever you want to remember for the upcoming meeting, this could be a good preparation tool for you. It automatically saves, as you can see. And then if I go over here to my notes, you can see every meeting that I have tested this out on. If I click on it here, it's going to give me a sidebar. Well, that loaded weird. Let's try that again. Maybe this one. I don't know what's going on with that one. This is how it should look. So I might need to investigate that. But all of your notes would show up in here and then the item that you notated, you can even click on that and go back into that agenda and see the attachment in there and your notes and such. So this is an optional tool for you to use should you want to. If you have any questions or need any help getting into the system, we can assist you with that in the clerk's office. And again, you have minutes to view in here as well if you need to look at minutes. And there, there's a media tab, but we don't use that. As you're familiar, all of our media is on YouTube. Does anybody have any questions about this tool?
So you're saying this is something that all members would have access and would have their own little like portal platform, or it's just for like the chair?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for asking. So this is actually, you each get your own individual logins. So any notes that you put in here, only you can see with your login. It is in here after the agenda is published. So when you guys get your agenda, I think on Fridays, is that right? Yeah, Fridays. Then you could log into the board portal and you can view and access all your materials and make notes on them if you want in preparation for the meeting. Yeah. I will say as well that our, when I was doing this presentation, I think for one of our commissions, the city attorney did say that they think that those notes may be subject to core requests. So please just keep it appropriate and then only put notes in there about things that you plan to bring up in the meeting anyways.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Then almost done.
Just one other question, since you have that one up, that board correspondence, so like on our current agenda, that's not there. You're saying that's something that is like a line item or, I mean, a gen, it's on the agenda for that word, that phrase?
Yeah.
Board correspondence?
Yeah. So we call them agenda sections. So that's the bigger capitalized bold font that you see with all the items underneath it. It's one that we're recommending for our boards and commissions to be able to organize those issues that people might want to, board members might want to raise during a meeting. It's, it's a good place. For council, you'll see that theirs is towards the end of the meeting. So that's something that, that we recommend and we can get added to your default agenda sections if you want.
Got it.
Yeah. All right. And then almost done. We have ethical expectations, which I'll go over briefly here. As an advisory board member, you are steward of public trust. So of course you want to act in the public's best interest, be respectful and fair, maintain transparency, which we've talked about a lot already. Avoid using your position for personal gain. Okay. And then we have item F2, recusals. I think we talked about conflict of interest a bit before. But I'll generally say if you feel that you can't be impartial or even if the public might perceive that you can't be impartial, then you may want to consider recusing yourself. And then as far as how to recuse yourself, you would state your intention to recuse on the record clearly and briefly. Step away from the discussion table or leave the room during the agenda item. And then do not participate in discussion, vote, or attempt to influence others in any way. All right. Any questions?
All right. Yeah. So you recuse yourself at the beginning. Like ideally, you would recuse yourself, not discuss, not vote, and leave the room until it's over.
Yes. Yeah. I would say at the beginning of an agenda item is ideal. The very moment that you realize that it's a conflict of interest and you're, you're going to want to recuse yourself. Yeah. All right. And then section G, adjourn. We already talked about this briefly. Just have you adjourn, do it consistently? And I am going to open it up for any questions. Anybody have any? No? All right then. Your presentation is adjourned. Thank you. We'll pass out candy one more time here.
Thank you so much. That was really helpful.
I'm glad. Thank you for having me.
I appreciate it. I can, I'll have to be reminded. Guys will have to remind me along the way what I'm, what I need to be doing. So
Got this anytime.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that presentation. All right. We're moving on to item E, next, new business. We have, I think this is like a motion. We have to decide. We need to move our March 2026 HAB meeting because there's a scheduling conflict. I know in the past, we've sort of, we've moved them kind of within that week. Is there a date that's being proposed per like availability of the city hall? Or would this be just a virtual switch?
If it's if you choose virtual, that's completely up to you. I don't have a list of alternate days. I did plan to bring that forward after the board does vote to kind of approve the switch and then I can. Next, next month's agenda, I can add. A list of those dates for discussion that would be available if you don't choose to go virtual.
So. I guess a motion to. To move. To move the March HAB meeting to an alternate day. That's my motion. Does anyone second that or have discussion around that?
So do the presentation, do we so move it or do we just table this next month when we have the dates? I don't know.
We do need to provide some. Answer to. The the hosts of the many awards that way they can start doing their plans.
So I move to propose we just we move. We move the date. I assume there's people that like to attend that, so we. I'm I'm moving to propose that we move it to another day. Anyone want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. All right, then I'll take, I guess I'll do a roll call vote, huh? I can't remember. All right, what was it? What's my order? I'll say Nate, I know I should be saying your last name.
All right.
Alan.
Hi.
Glenn.
Hi.
Amy, I know I'm doing this like all over the place. All right, seems like, oh, did I miss anyone in the room?
Yourself.
Myself. Do I say yes? And unanimous vote was unanimous. We're going to move the meeting. And next time Zach, next meeting Zach will have dates for us to select.
Correct, yes. I'll make sure that we get. Is the preference for the same week, the third week of the month?
Do people have conflicts on any days of the week that would prevent them from attending?
I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's March, so. It's hard to say, so I would just say pick pick a. Give us some dates.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll we'll figure out what works best. All right, thank you for that. That was kind of a clunky. I was trying to be all professional and it was a little clunky, but thank you for that. Next item is the ADU ADU survey discussion. I think that. Someone else will have to tell me who's who's leading that, but it's a discussion, so. Please.
Amy, do you want to give sort of the executive summary on that?
Sure, thanks. So Nate and I. Worked together to build a survey. And Nate provided first draft, which was very helpful to get me over my executive task functions. And then. I looked at the questions and kind of reframed them in an educational informative way, not only a data set. Mindset and then Chair. Aaliyah, her name is, her last name is escaping me. Also reviewed it and. I believe her comments were that she appreciated both of our work and did like the educational aspect. And so, yeah, that's where we are.
And do you have that? Is that something you've all shared with each other before? It's just you're saying now it's. Okay. So where are we then? Is it a. A survey that how would it be delivered to?
Yeah, I'm wondering if I just read it out loud or do we need to add that to. The agenda next month to for everyone to have time to kind of. Absorb it. What are you thinking, Chair?
That seems like probably. Better because it's not in, it wasn't in the packet, right? There wasn't anything. Unless I missed it.
Yeah, I think it was just kind of introducing the idea, but. We could send that to you and then I believe you could send that out for everyone to review by the next meeting. And then we could come with comments, corrections, concerns, et cetera.
Yeah, that that works for me. Is that it's something we're deciding? Do we need to? Because it was just a discussion, do I just leave it like that or do I need some kind of motion for that?
I do believe we need a motion. To add it to the agenda and to be able to distribute the work product.
Is that? Is that the motion?
Allison.
What's that?
I I don't think you need a motion. I just think that you can direct that it be put on next month's. The discussion resulted in putting it on next month's agenda for. Any decisions or further discussion.
Okay, good, so we'll.
To Fred, you you and your team, you've had experience, right, issuing surveys before? Because I know your input will be important, too.
No, actually, we haven't had experience issuing surveys or sending out surveys. Usually we. We hire somebody to do that. So. If if we're able to, if we're able to do the survey or if the HAB is able to do the survey and wanting to do the survey, you'd have to. Figure out how we we would have to figure out how to do it. Yeah, that that would have to be worked out.
And I know in the past, like we've done. We've done other surveys and we've kind of timed it around. You know, other Manatee events and we've had. You know, whether it was a table or I think we. Like someone like we tasked different people like. All right, you go to the library or you go to the, you know, or if it was a digital. Thing, maybe we're just putting posters. So it sounds like those are things that we also need to talk about is how we. We wanted it delivered if it's, you know, all digital or if we want to also provide opportunities where people could do it. By paper, but then I don't know, does that like skew things because you don't know if somebody's done it twice? I don't know. Or does that matter really? Because we're really just more. Trying to gauge. What people are thinking about accessory dwelling units in Manatee? Is that? It's more like the education lens on just getting an idea of. People's interest and understanding, so then we know how to. Okay. So it really wouldn't matter if people were doing it twice. It's just more.
I'm okay with the honor system.
I think the original. Motivation to and, you know, things. A lot of things have been happening was. To potentially issue the survey to help support and inform. The first and second reading from city planning to city council. On ADUs that some of that, but look, everyone's been very, very busy. That doesn't mean that the survey still can't be. Incredibly useful and valuable. It will be, you know, to to your point. And Amy around, you know, educating and raising awareness and. And getting a sense for the sizing. Of what may may emerge, so.
And if I may, Allison, I'm thinking. Understanding what the purpose or what the reason behind the survey would help you understand how it would be distributed. And maybe and and I'm not, I'm not entirely certain of that and I'm not sure how much discussion there was on that, but you know, what what's the intention? What's the purpose? What are you trying to get out of this? I don't know if that discussion needs to. It needs to occur or not.
Yeah, I'm just stepping back into this, so. I'll need, yeah, Amy and Nate to provide.
So it's twofold. Originally, like Nate said, it was to kind of get a. A litmus or data set on the mindset before the first and second reading. However. Because we didn't have a quorum last time, I don't think that that was possible. And so I don't believe that that's would be. You know, not beneficial to us. The second. Lens that we were looking through is to frame the questions in an informative piece. So even if you. Only read the survey and you don't participate, maybe you could gather some information that you didn't know. Or it was very similar in our approach to doing pieces in the Pike's Peak Bulletin. So very much a way to kind of explain how it's not a one size fits all. It's not the complete. Package of addressing affordable housing, but it would be. It could be a small solution.
And and I would share too, there was a nice little primer. Of the survey Allison was very helpful at the ECO Awards called the Greenie Awards, which is a wonderful event. We had a booth set up, HAB had a booth. And Allison had sort of. Had three questions, so the people that would come up to the booth to understand, do you understand affordable housing? Would you be interested in having? An ADU in your home? It was it was a useful, just kind of quick, high level straw poll. And some of the that same spirit is reflected in the survey that that Amy Amy drafted, so. Wanted to share that and thank you, Allison, for for helping put all that together.
Thank you for going. And facilitating it. So it sounds like we just need to add this back on to the agenda. Send. Send me and then Zach can add it to the packet so that everyone can. Look at it and we can make sure that it appears to be something that is worth our time and. You know, how how we want to distribute it. I'm not sure. If there's any need that it needs to go through, does it need to go through the city communications or anything before? It's it's sent out or approved by council?
I I don't know if it has to be approved, but we probably we I probably want, I would want to make sure that we have have buy in at the staff level. So I would want to make sure that that city administrator is is aware of what's going on and and that. We know what 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 the purpose is.
Sounds good, so we'll put a little more thought in it. And then come up with a clear. Next month, after people, yeah, people have a chance to look at it and then we can have. A more thoughtful conversation on how, yeah, the purpose and how we want to deliver it, so. I appreciate it. I'd love to see it, so thank you for that.
Nancy, did you have any thoughts or anything?
No, I would, I was gonna echo that collaborating with staff, I think is very important on this. I would not, I do not think you need council's approval to do this.
Got it, okay, thank you. Okay.
I have one quick question before we move forward. Am I allowed to forward Allison the work product of the three of us or do I have to only send her due to sunshine laws? The actual survey?
I think you can send me everything, right? It's not like we're having a conversation. Like a conversation, right? She can send me the documents that the task group put together. Yes.
Yes, it's going to go to all of council or all of HAB, correct?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay.
We can't make any decisions on it prior, that's all.
That makes, yes, of course, okay, but just for just their general review and then. It's placed in the packet. All right, any other discussions around that before we move on? All right. Then the next and last or almost last. Is. Acknowledgements for our council member Nancy Fortune. It's her last, well, soon to be. Last meeting. I know we want to, everyone wanted to just extend appreciation for all of your time and guidance. I know for. For me, you helped so much as we were trying to get the Prop one, two, three application. Submitted, so I greatly appreciated your time and I believe Amy. Correct, has something that she would like to share.
Okay, so I was. I've always been honored that Nancy has given me validation on my writing, so I decided to write her something. In appreciation, so I'm going to try to read this without getting emotional, but it's a poem for Nancy, a poem for Nancy, and it says. If Manatee Springs, if Manatee Springs is a song's journey, your contribution is verse worthy. Steady in rhythm, clear in tone, guided by something bold, something born of discernment and soul. Your goal remains tethered to those who may need it most, offering wisdom without the boast. Decorum in motion, fortune in form, you are leading by listening and that should be the norm. Thank you now and in the future for making Manatee a lot cooler.
That was unexpected and now I'm emotional. Thank you so much. I do plan to be here for your December meeting. But I will say tonight that I have been so impressed with this group. The caliber, the experience, the expertise, the dedication. The commitment is phenomenal. I think the city is incredibly lucky to have you all on HAB and thank you for all that you do. And Amy, could you email me that?
Of course, I wanted to print it out and bring it to you, but we've got a sick house here and I didn't want to spread the germs, but I'm happy to email it to you.
Thank you, everybody. And I I do have a couple of, I'm not on the agenda. For reports like I normally am. But I don't think, but I would like, since we just did ADUs, I'd like to just say a couple of things. In my council update, if that's all right.
Sure, yeah, so we, yeah, the agenda was a little different than I was used to, but. Yeah, does anyone have anything else though they'd like to extend to Nancy? Before we move to her just updates.
I'll take that as a it's ready for me to give my.
We appreciate you, okay, you go for it.
Thank you. First, I want to say Aaliyah did a great job at the council briefing a couple of weeks ago. She did ask for $2,000 for the budget. I can make no. You know, assumptions that HAB will get that $2,000. We, the council is meeting this Saturday to go through the budget, as you're all aware, 2A did not pass. So I think that. We're going to see significant cuts to the budget. And I don't know what's going to remain and what isn't, so I just want to give you fair warning on that. And then I just wanted to say a couple of things about the ADU ordinance that was. Well, it's not been passed on. That you all submitted recommendations on. On October seventh, council. On October 7th, the council decided that the ADUs will not be able to be used for short, short-term rentals, primarily because um, it's supposed to be for, I mean, the whole intent of the state law was for affordable housing. There's a couple of administrative things that uh, that Fred had to include in it, but um of interest also on October 2nd, at first reading, there was a very high interest in not permitting um, ADUs on the side of the house or in, in the front of the house. So that came back to us on October 21st for second reading. Um, and just to cut to the chase, it is still not decided, we did not approve the ordinance on second reading. The emergency ordinance is still in place for ADUs that you all also had a chance to review. And the two sticking points were um, under 18.04.3.7 U standards, uh, paragraphs ENF. And they had to do with front yards, uh, side yards, front yards primarily, and if ADUs could be put there. And um, uh, that was for E, and then F was ADU shall not result in the loss of covered parking spaces. There was a lot of disagree, not disagreement, discussion on council, yeah, disagreement, on if parking garages could be converted to ADUs, um, so there, there's a split. Um, and then our attorney brought up that um, we also had to consider that if we could add on to, you know, make the parking, you know, add a second story to a garage, um, expand a small footprint of a carport, et cetera, et cetera, so there's a lot of discussion on that. But uh, bottom line upfront, it got sent back to Planning Commission. I know that some on council wanted it to be, Planning Commission to act on it very quickly and return it to council for a vote before this council before January, so that this council was still in place, um, but I don't know where it is, Fred, I don't know if you could tell us if that's gonna come back to this council or the next council.
Yeah, it'll, uh, Planning Commission made a recommendation at their meeting last Wednesday, and so it'll be scheduled for uh December 2nd, I think, is the Tuesday.
So my question, I would very much like to ask the HAB what your thoughts are on this, because it will come back for second re, second and final reading, and I would like to uh, kind of represent what your thoughts are on this, since I don't know that any of you were at the Planning Commission meeting. So, is that clear? I know Nate was at the meet, at the council meeting when this.
And I went to the planning, the planning meeting too, and I it, it, Fred, are you able to provide the recommendations that city planning is making to, to HAB, to Na- Nancy's point, and then maybe we could formulate another one, like sort of a letter in advance of December 2nd, like we've done in the past?
Yeah, I can do that, the, uh, yeah, the, the Planning Commission made a recommendation, it's matter of public record, so anybody, yeah, so it's out in the open, so I can, I can let you all right now that they, they went ahead and recommended um, that, uh, that the detached ADUs um, be specified, not be allowed in the front yards, but detached ADUs be in the, in the backyard. And, and prohibit them in the front yard, but they said if it's attached, if it's attached to the house, they did not see a reason why that could not be placed anywhere around the house, as long as it com- complied with current setbacks and current design standards and everything like that. The second, the second one regarding um, loss of covered parking spaces um, as a result of ADU construction, they, uh, they recommended not to impose a restriction at all on um, on uh, regulating or limiting the use of parking spaces or parking structures a- as potential ADUs, uh, again, as long as, um, as long as those, as long as those structures complied um, complied with the, with the standards that are laid out for ADUs.
So what you're saying, Fred, I'm sorry, what you're saying is that if there's a garage in the front yard that they can uh, put on a second story, or um, as long as it's within the, the use, uh, the land use code guidelines, or they can expand the footprint of that, that garage or carport?
Yeah, what they did is they, they, they decided not to impose any limitation and let the current standards govern, govern the ability to, to use that, that garage structure um, as an ADU. And if the, if the configuration of the lot and if the standards allowed for expansion, then, then they would allow that.
Okay. Great. No, I was, I mean, that was kind of, uh, because I was, I was objecting to um, limitations, so I'm for me, I'm pleased to hear that, but I would like to hear um, um, HAB's impression on that. To me, that's a good result, but.
Go ahead, Amy.
Only, I think nuanced, Fred, and you keep me honest on this, is I thought there was discussion where you could have a detached ADU on the side of the house, provided that it was set back a certain amount, and in what you just read there, it sounded like it's constrained. The detached ADU is constrained to the rear of the house, which is I think from HAB's point of view, and of course, I'm not speaking for everyone, my sense would be that that would be pretty, pretty restrictive, because there's a lot of parcels where there's room to the side of that primary residence to build a, you know, um, a detached ADU, but, but please correct me if I'm, I'm off on that.
That was my impression, that after the October 7th, um, the, what we had on October 7th did allow the um, ADUs who built to the side, as long as it did not come at all in front of the, into the front yard at all, but it still could be on the side yard. So, that's a great, yeah.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll check the record again, I, I was, I was listening to what the Planning Commission did, because yes, there was a lot of discussion. I thought, I, I thought that they indicated they agreed with the location of detached ADUs a- agreed with the restriction that was remanded by, by city council um, to keep it, to keep it in the, to keep them in the backyard, if they were detached. If they were attached, if you wanted to add on to your existing residence and put an ADU on that way, they, it could be, it could be anywhere on the building, front, side, rear, as long as it complied with, with setbacks. I will ver, I will verify that.
Yeah, and I would like to know from HAB, because I was under the impression too, Nate, that you could have a detached one on the side of the house. But that was the, that was part of the question, so I would like to just hear HAB's opinion on both the garage uh, and the side of the house, or front, you know, even the front of the house, if you want it, you know, on the front of the house, if HAB has a position on that or not, so.
We have a hand raised, um, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I was um, in attendance via YouTube for the first reading, and I was surprised by Councilwoman Wolf's um addition to front yard, backyard, I'm really sure where that came from, it seems to be a personal bias in her aesthetics and not um, what the community has repeatedly asked for, which is options for affordable housing, I feel like that's a direct conflict of the state's agenda to try to offer more, she's putting more bureaucratic measures, um, again, that tend to, I, I really don't understand where the fear is coming from, or what the um, barrier is in her mind if someone wants to put a smaller house in the front or the backyard, and it almost felt to me like by the body language, it was just um, unsightly, and I don't really understand how someone on council can determine what my yard or my property aesthetics would be based on her personal preferences, it just, it's adding more, like would we have to determine what the front yard is and what the backyard is and what the side yard is, because for me, I have major entrances on most, I think, three um, directions of my house, and now that mean that planning would have to you know, determine which one, and i- it just seemed like unnecessary bureaucratic paperwork um, and barriers. I also think the same for garages, if I want a garage space of, of, of personal property, or I want to convert that, I don't understand how city council can determine um, my aesthetics or the town aesthetics. It feels very HOA and not a municipality.
Glenn?
Um, yeah, I would, um, I would wonder whether the planning has had um, legal council review, because it sounds to me like they're being offered restrictive, and I think the state legislation doesn't allow the restrictions that they're putting on that, so how we get an opinion about how restrictive that is, um, secondly, I, I would think that the side of the house um, and restrictions on that would certainly be in violation of the state law.
Yeah, I would second what the others have said, I don't think, I think there shouldn't be any restrictions on it, I think um, I think Colorado Springs has like an odd front yard restriction, I think theirs says something about no front yards, but then it talks about like um, side yards, corner yards and rear yards, and to me, it's ridiculous, but um, I would say that in Manatee, like my neighbor's house, they have a huge front yard and they have no backyard, like, that would be perfect to sit a small, like um, ADU, I mean, I think again, like, I think people are thinking like it's, someone's not gonna build something that's like, it's their yards, or they're gonna like, try to make it aesthetically pleasing, like it's, it's, um, I think that, yeah, adding any kind of limitation is not something that HAB would want. I think my understanding, at least hearing from the members that have spoken, and then the work that we've done over the years, that we should, there shouldn't be any limitations. It should be allowed, because it, it sounds like planning is saying that they're not gonna put any limitations on garages, so that's a good thing, so I would agree with that, but I also would just take out, like, the HAB. The HAB doesn't want any limitations on where they're putting it, as long as it meets whatever the code and other requirements are related. Any um, other HAB members have discussion or thoughts around that? Before, I guess we want to give our opinion, so I should ask for a motion and then a vote, so that I guess they can share that with with council, or do we need to write it out and have it um, submitted in like a formal letter?
Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful if, if you were able to prepare a letter um, explaining, explaining your, your advisement, explaining a recommendation, have something in writing that we can put on the record at city council.
Okay, and that just would need to get to, to you by what date?
Let's see. Oh, um, could, uh, could you get it to me by Monday?
By Monday? Yeah, I can craft something, and then can I ask just someone on the board that wants to just peek at it before I send it? Amy, I, can I just send it to you? So I guess I'm putting out a motion to allow me to craft a message um, that will be presented to council regarding um HAB's request to not have any limitations on the location, or whether it's detached or attached ADUs in support of the city's commitment to increase opportunities for affordable housing. Um, if that's clear, if I could get a second or a, or a clarification second.
I'll second that.
All right, then I'll move around, uh, Nate?
You need more, you, I think you should open to if there's more discussion or not, Allison.
Okay, do we have any more discussion on that?
The only thing I'd mention, I'm happy to provide a second eye on whatever you draft, Allison, if you'd like, just keep me on speed dial.
Cool, okay. So I've got a draft, and I can blind copy, can I blind copy everyone? I'm not allowed to do that, uh-uh, it just has to be the three, okay, and then.
I think you can blind copy, you just can't get, they just can't um, respond to you um, or respond to everybody.
Cause I, I could blind copy them the final draft, right?
Yes.
Definitely.
Does anyone have discussion on anything else I should add? It's, I'm, just want to make sure I understand confirm that everyone agrees that, Amy?
Yeah, I just wanted to like, reiterate that we're not saying no holds bar, we're saying the limitations within the code that already exists.
Yeah, Glenn, that's like what you were saying as well, like.
Well, I think that it's, there are very restrictive um, terminology in the state, the law that was passed by the state, and we need to be sure that Manatees in compliance, what the state is requiring, allowing with um, ADUs, because they're very specifically about what they wanted to not restrict. They can't, you can't do restrictive te- setbacks um, beyond what is normal.
And Glenn, I do want to clarify that um, the planning commission did have legal council, as did council, city council. So their recommendations are within the state requirements.
Got it.
They, you know, they chose to be, they chose to be restrictive, but their restrictions are within what the state requires.
So it sounds like our only change would be would be, we would support, we support what planning has put out about the garages. That the language, because he's, they're saying no restrictions related on attached.
You can always go back to the planning commission, are the minutes published already?
Okay.
They're, they're gonna be published, but Allison, what I'll do, I'll, I'll send you a draft of what.
Okay, beautiful.
Uh, but it sounds like, it, it sounds like what I'm hearing is, is the HAB, what, what the HAB wants to say is, is that you're, you're not in favor of or not recommending either of the restrictions that were remanded by city council to the planning commission.
Correct, beautifully stated.
And, and maybe that, you write it in that, in that way.
Good, okay. Do I need a vote? Because I'm, it's an action?
Yes, you made a motion and you have a second, so you have to vote.
All right, so we'll cruise around, Nate?
Aye.
Um, Rebecca?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Allison, aye. All right, vote is unanimous to submit the letter not recommending any um, restrictions to ADU location. Beautiful.
And just completely, like, connected to that, I would encourage if you, you do have a little bit of time in your diaries to maybe pull the YouTube videos from the council meeting, and also the latest city planning meeting. Um, to Amy's earlier point, it, there was some valuable insight in terms of the different philosophies and approach from across the different members of, of both the, those, those bodies.
Got it, okay, that's a good recommendation, thank you. All right, I'll work on that, I'll get cracking on that and get it, try to get it in you, for you guys to look at, Amy and Nate, um. I don't know, what's today? Today's Wednesday, I'll, I better do it sooner than later, so um, maybe by like Saturday, you guys could check your inbox. Okay, perfect. All right, um, I think we are nearing, um, we don't have any old business, um. What was her thing about adjournment? I'm supposed to ask if you guys have if we have anything else to discuss?
Allison. Doing now the. Allison, I got a question?
Yes. Yes.
Are we gonna be having normal meetings in December, January and February? We we talked about the March meeting, but the other month would be the same?
Just on the same, the always the third, yes.
Okay.
Does that work with your schedule?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. And we'll always have the opportunity if people are, we know it's like the season of sickness, so everyone always has the opportunity to join online. And if the weather's ever bad, I don't know, I know sometimes the you know, office closes early and we'll just um do virtual, but we'll cross that bridge when it happens, so. All right, well, I will say that it is seven sixteen PM and the meeting is adjourned. I appreciate everyone's participation.
Thanks.
Thank you all. Appreciate you. Thanks, Zach and the team there. Fred?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Bye.